Alrighty, I think I am live. Hello, hello, everybody. Welcome Zen friends to a special Friday night session where I do go live again to finish up all the readings I did not finish in the earlier evening session. I did not get to any free readings. I actually have a handful of donations to finish up first. And then we'll move on to a couple of YouTube membership, my monthly membership readings, two of them. And then the free readings for everyone else, a little over 20 or so to go. So you'll head in the description box of the video, you'll see the order in which I'm going to complete everything. At the end of the session, I will post a pinned comment listing the timestamp. So all you have to do is click on the timestamp, it'll take you directly to your reading. So I will, I will post that within 30 seconds or so after I finish the stream. I'll put that out there. You might just have to refresh to be able to see it. You'll notice there's no chat in this session because I'm not taking any new questions in this one. But I'll be back tomorrow morning at 11 a.m. mountain time, tomorrow night at 6 p.m. mountain time. And then back again on Sunday at 11 a.m. mountain time as well, if you're interested in posting new questions. I think that's the big thing I wanted to say. So we'll dive in here. Going to continue to use the Arcanus animal tarot. If you're interested, that's what they look like there. And we'll use the Art of Manifestation oracle for donation readings. They get a, what do I call them, a fortune cookie after your reading as an additional message from spirit. So we will dive in here. So let me move my coffee. I just know I'm gonna spill it because it's right by my mouse over here. Alright, so Maria P., you will be up first. Let's grab your timestamp here. So thank you so much for your donation and I think you had a general reading too, a free reading. You'll find that when I get down to it, down in the free reading area too. So you'll have a timestamp for donations and one under the free reading section as well. Alright, so Maria. Thank you for your donation. Excuse me. My voice was changing. Hidden puberty again. Oh. But thank you for your donation via Z PayPal. And when I know what are Wally's feelings and thoughts towards you today? Alright, let's take a look here. What are his feelings and thoughts towards you today? Alright, we'll look at those. And then, did he like your new hair color and style? Ooh, got a new do, have we? Alright, we'll take a look here. And then what's coming towards you and Wally this next week? Alright. These two and these two. Scooch these down a little bit. And then what's he up to this weekend? None of those. Nothing. He's up to nothing. No. I'm sure he's hardly ever, never up to nothing unless he's sick, right? One card for that. And then, how's the dark side? And then any movement out of the dark and into the light, right? Okay, so what are his feelings and thoughts towards you? You got the temperance and the ace of cups, yeah? So he's got that wonderful love energy, the ace of cups. It feels like, like it's a renewed love for you. It's like there's a new kind of emotional expression coming in with that ace of cups there. Temperance card is patience and unfolding, patience unfolding, still seeing things unfolding. You know, the going back and forth between the two cups is about patience. And I just feel like right now, today, they're just kind of sitting in this allowing things to unfold kind of energy, trusting in the relationship, trusting in how they're feeling in their emotions. It's very happy emotions, ace of cups is almost like a new spark of emotion towards you. So I like that energy. What, what, I mean, maybe it was the hair. We'll find out if it's the hair color and style here. But it just feels like there's something that happened, just made him go, I love you, you know, kind of energy. So whatever happened, there's something that kind of ignited an extra, extra little spark. So we like that. Did he like your new hair color? The hanged man, they're, they're trying to see it from a different perspective. I don't feel like they were, they're like, that's different, that's, that's, you know, I feel like it's growing on them. I feel like the hair color. I don't, sitting in there and Jay, it kind of feels like they're not a big person of like hair color changes. Like they're not. It takes some time to kind of go, oh, because it's like a, not that it's a shock, but they're just like, okay, I, I got used to seeing you a certain way, a certain hair color. It, it, I have to kind of get used to it, you know? I don't feel like they're, like they hated it or they were like, oh my God, it's so great, you know? It's not like they love redheads and you got your hair dyed red and they're like, oh my God, I love it. They're just like, okay, well, yeah, that's, that's a good color on you too. I just gotta get used to it, you know, kind of energy. The style, they like that. They like how you're true to your authentic self with the three of pentacles. So they really like the style that you got it cut. And color, they're not, you know, mad about it or anything, but they're just, they gotta get used to it. If that makes sense. What's coming towards you and Wally this next week? Two situations, two cards each. Got the seven of wands and the wheel of fortune. There is something here about out in the public with the seven of wands. It's about not dimming your light, not asking permission to shine, not to defend your actions or, but it's about being up on a hill and being seen, which means it's outside. And it's like, I feel like you guys are doing something external and it feels great. The wheel of fortune, it feels like a great time has had. But I feel like it's doing something outside and like not outside, like out in the outdoors, but outside of the home, outside of, in public, you know, energy here. So I really like that. And then you have another one here. We have here the five of pentacles and the eight of cups. There is a second get together here. This feels like, because eight of cups energy is a flow of emotion, walking away from emotions that don't serve the five of pentacles, this feeling of lack. I feel like the, the, the one, the first one is like a planned, kind of, let's go do this kind of thing that he'll approach you on if he hasn't already. And the other one is more of a, I had a horrible, horrible day and I just want to leave it all behind. Can I just come over? Can I just hang out? Can we go hang out? Kind of thing too. So I like that. So something happened. I don't necessarily feel like it's home specific, but I feel like it's just, it just feels like it a crappy day. Like all sides kind of feel like he's just like, I just need to get away from all this, you know, kind of stuff. So hopefully that makes sense. What is he up to this weekend? High priestess, really off to, by himself, working on the high priestess temple. The high priestess is stepping away, going up, connecting with spirit, looking behind the veil, diving deep. But the high priest is going up into our high priestess temple. I feel like he's spending a lot of stuff on home and I don't know, he's kind of in this mood. We do have a Scorpio moon this weekend, which does, one, it's sexiness, but, but also there's this kind of inner niche, revealer of secrets, finding stuff out. But really self-reflective, more so type of energy. And that's what I feel like they're in this very self-reflective mood, working on home, getting really involved in tasks. Because I feel like that's how they take their mind off things as they get into doing stuff. Distract the mind by doing tasks. So I feel like they're very task oriented. The dark side, nine of wands, lot of fire, the dragon, dragon fire energy. Just a lot of perseverance. I need to persevere. I need to keep going. I need to keep going. I need to keep going. Lot of fire though, lot of flame, meaning sparks, meaning walking on eggshells, you know, six, you know, little digs and, you know, just little fires that are, keep going off, nine little fires. So it's just like, it's the same old, same old. Wow, nine of ones leading to the 10 of ones. Any movement? Getting close, the 10 of ones is an ending and new beginning energy. So the nine of ones is pushing it there. It's, it's heading toward there. There's just so many details of things to get figured out. And I just feel like they have so much that happens all over the place with work and family and, you know, ex, future ex and home to get prepared to sell or to be able to move and prepare to go buy a house and all this stuff. I just feel like they're in so many different directions that, that's what the, kind of the 10 of ones represents in a way. Because if you have 10 things that you're working on all at the same time, right? They all move ahead one space. And so there's very slow progress in things because there's so much that they're involved in. Eventually, if they can whittle things down, they can have faster movement. But I feel like there's so much change, 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 change that they're, they're always in recovery instead of like reaction and recovery instead of like initiation of things. It's more reacting instead of putting a plan and putting action behind it. It's more, you know, all the plates are spinning, trying to keep them all spinning and none of them falling down. They can't get to anything because there's always something that's urgent that's coming up, right? So no, no big progress on that side, but though it feels like it's getting closer and closer. Your fortune cookie is choices and decisions. Boom, boom, boom. The choices that we make today are defining the shape of our tomorrow. So it's hardly surprising that we sometimes worry about making the right decisions. Do not shroud your mind in fog of uncertainty. Just as you have choices today, you also have choices tomorrow and the day after. Be assured, you can always change course again. I like that, your power of choice, you know, when we, we start getting involved in all that stuff. It's always great to come back to, I get to choose the story, my emotion, my energy and my actions and no one else's. So I'm not at the whim of the outside world and what people are doing and not doing, saying or not saying. I get to choose what my life is, right? So I love that for you. Alright, so that's it for that one, Maria P. Eventually we'll circle back around for your free reading. Let me take a sip here. Alright. Right, so Andrea, you are up next. Let me grab your timestamp here for the post comment there. Alright, so Andrea, thank you so much for your donation. I greatly appreciate it and for your patience in getting to your reading, of course. So you're, you're a Cancer. Oh, you're a Cancer and anyone know, has Brian the Aquarius moved on from you with someone else or does he still have feelings? Alright, it's hard to tell with those Aquarians. I'm an Aquarius sun. Don't be mad at me. Don't be mad at me. We're not all the same. We're all a different soup. Alright, let's take a look here, Andrea. Let's get into details about Brian the Aquarius. Have they moved on to someone else? And does he still have emotions for you? What else do we want to know here? Okay, well, there's a lot of cards just for those questions, but I'm sure they're gonna embellish and have more on here as well. Alright, let's scooch these over. So I have space. And we will dive in and see what is going on. There's definitely, there's some progression happening here in your life. I don't want to go to the bottom of the deck yet. We want to answer these questions first. Has Brian moved on from you with someone or someone else? Yeah, we got the ace of wands, which is a new passion, ace being the number one. So I do feel like they've got new passion, a new love in, well, it's a new passion interest. It's not cups, it's wands, which is energetic and physical attraction. So I deal, I do feel like they have a new interest in their life here. Does he still have feelings for you? Yeah, two of ones. Yeah, because he can have, it's funny that you have, on one hand, the ace of ones, then the other one, well, there is you too. So they still have attraction towards you with all of this energy, this fire that's here. So they still have feelings, but they, it doesn't mean they can't move and move on to someone else too. This makes sense with the bottom of the deck with the eight of ones. Brian does have a lot of passion. And they don't necessarily have a lot of emotional expression. I feel like a lot of what they expressed and what they learned in their life was to express the feelings they have inside through passion, through intimacy, through that attraction and not so much through emotion and feeling. So if you felt like they never really were able really to be able to share emotion, but they liked the touch and intimacy and passion. And that's how they learned to express it. And that's where I kind of feel here, the eight of ones, they have a lot of passion to give. And what tends to happen with that is like, and this is what spirits just bringing through, the tendency of when I have a lot of passion to give, but I, like, let's say you're an emotional based person, right? Like you don't mind passion, but you need the emotion, emotional connection, or it just feels like, I can't say this on YouTube. It just feels like, you know, it just having pleasure and by proxy, you're like, yeah, I could or could without you. It's just, it's just passion, but emotion, I want emotion because I want deep emotional connection, which I don't feel like they could give. And I feel like they've realized this, they have all this passion to give, but they aren't able to give individuals the emotional connection they want. So I feel like they move on. It's like they can have like this boom, passionate experience for a little bit, a little bit. But then when they start to get the feeling like they can't give the emotion to the other person, they'll, and then they go start something else until it doesn't work out and then it doesn't work out. So I feel like it's an ongoing pattern. That's why there's eight wands. It just feels like, like a forest fire or a grass fire that just moves from forest to forest and it can't go back because there's nothing to go back and consume. So they just keep going and they don't look back, that kind of energy. So it's not personal, it's just what they're, what they grew up with. They didn't get a whole lot of emotion when they were younger and so they don't have a lot of emotion to give, but they give through passion instead. So hopefully that makes sense. What's with these other cards? You got two and two, it looks like two and two and two and, and two. So you've got some themes unfolding here for you. So I feel like they're saying, yeah, it's best not to be burned by the match. Again, have you ever heard that where it's like, you want to see a match burn twice? Yeah, and they go, one, and then they burn you in two and you're like, ow. Don't try this at home. But there is this, you know, kind of like it's for your best so that you won't get burned a second time. So it's okay to let them go. And this is what they're trying to show you, the progression that comes from all this. So you have the three of cups, yeah, and the empress. So because you don't want a third party situation, which can happen with them. Sometimes they will overlap as they're leaving someone else, be with someone else. I don't feel like they did that with you, but I feel like they've done it in the past. They will do it in the future until they deal with that. But this is also a joy of three of cups and the two threes, the, the major arcana three of the empress is about mother nature, mother nurture. And I feel like what's happening here, that's going to be moving forward in your life here is before you meet someone else, this new love that's headed your way, you're gonna meet, like the three of cups is like a group of besties, three best friends. It's not romantic. These are like people who will feel like brothers or sisters for the rest of your life, where your three peas in a pod, you think enough alike that you guys can see something and all laugh knowing what all three of you were thinking, but different enough too, to bring different experiences and fun. But you also, the, the reason why they're bringing this up is you meet them first because they're also the foundation for you, before you meet someone else. Because they are the ones that are gonna, each of you are gonna keep each other in check to make sure you don't go fall back into old habits. Like something I used to do would be when I would meet someone, I would start shrinking. Try, try to become who I think they needed to be. I'd shrink away from friends. For my life, I would make them my life instead of have my own life and have them be a part of my life. I would make them my life, even to the point where I left and moved out of state with someone. Just have them cheat on me a few months later and for me to return back six months later, you know, that's what I would do. But this, this group, they would, they would be like, have you met someone? And like, yeah, how do you know? Because you're shrinking, you're, you're not being yourself. You're, you stopped hanging out. What's going on? You know, holding each other accountable in a loving way and funny ways too, like, you know, girl, what you be doing, you know? So I like this because this is going to be a strong foundation of that. So if you don't have like two besties, you're gonna meet them first before you meet these others. And it's going to be love that's going to be powerful and solid and unconditional for the rest of your life between the three of you, which is a great foundation, you know? You'll have friends forever, you know, boyfriends, girlfriends, they come and go, but these true friends are forever. Alright, so let's see what happens next here, what they want you to know. Yep, three of ones, along with the king of cups. Yeah. You do end up going a different direction here when you meet this king of cups. The king of cups is someone who is like a very compatible person. They balance emotion and mind. The king rolls over cups with the queen, but also all the kings have a second portion of swords, which is mine. That's why it's such a beautiful balance between the two. Excuse me, and the reason why I feel like with the three ones is you take a different direction because I feel like as you meet these individuals and as you are being more true to yourself, you're realizing what really is a fit for me. And it's like there's this change of energy instead of, do I, does my energy match that person? That person's energy? No, it's like we switch it to the empowerment of, does their energy match mine? It's a, it's a difference of feeling like I have to become something for someone else going, no, do they match me? And if they don't, then I'm, I'm not gonna ask them to change to match my energy and I'm not going to change to match someone else's. This one, it's like a perfect, wonderful fit in a lot of ways. So I like this for you. But that happens first, the three, the three musketeers happen first and then this other individual. And I do feel like it's going to be a fire sign that you're attracted to because you have the king of wands, the ruler over the fire suit and the strength card, which is Leo energy. Doesn't have to be a Leo, can be. But the great thing about it is they're very passionate, very active. They like to travel, they like to visit and new things. And this is a higher vibration because a low vibration fire sign, all of us have low expression of our signs, but low expression of fire signs is look at me, look at me. And then they end up being, you know, the town hoe. Or going from passion to passion to passion and, you know, that, but this is a mature one. The king of wands, like the knight of wands would be like a prince who ends up in brothels and all that, you know, kind of stuff because they just, they can't control their passions. The king of wands is a mature in their passions, knowing when's appropriate and when's not appropriate. So this is what you deserve and what you have coming in here. So I like that. And they're hot, they're handsome, beautiful, fire signs. You have a natural energy that's attractive to you and attracts you to them. And you're just like, wow. So I like that for you. You're like, I deserve that. Yeah, 10 of cups, joy and happiness. And then the queen of swords. Yeah, that's like the companion to the king of cups. Because the queen of swords rolls over swords, the mind, but all queens get a second portion of cups where the king of cups rolls over cups gets a second portion of that. So divine counterpart energy, very beautiful fit, joy overflowing. So this next relationship is worth it and it is something that is more compatible with who you are. It's a great fit. So I like that for you. So I, now I understand why they're like, you know, yeah, does that make it feel a little better? That you're like, yeah, that forest fire, I don't need to worry about them. They can go burn other forests and continue to consume. But I've been spared, you know, and showing what's coming forward for you in the future. I'm like, hell yeah, right? Alright, let's see what else they, else they have here for you with your fortune cookie. And you've got open the floodgates. Beautiful energy here. Card number 38. If we're unable to acknowledge and talk about our feelings, they stack up and build up like a pressure cooker waiting to blow, coloring our ability to see clearly. So this card, I'm sorry, calls you to acknowledge your emotions and find a way to release them. Write down your thoughts and feelings and if needed, reach out for professional help. This is good. This is realizing what you've learned through your experiences with Brian and others. This allows you to see, you know, we always call in to us, our teachers that we want to have in our lives to show us what we want to see about ourselves until we see it. So it's important, and this is part of the process of waiting and meeting these other two besties and then the other person will come during while you're waiting. It's good to reflect on your thoughts and beliefs that don't serve you anymore. These emotions that don't serve you anymore, the energy that doesn't serve you anymore. Even things in the physical realm that don't serve you anymore, that you want to kind of chunk and, and send away too. So I, I like that for you. It's a good, use this time to let stuff go and glean the knowledge of what you've learned about yourself through these relationships so that you don't bring it in with that new one that comes in. So I like that for you, Andrea. Hopefully that helps and resonates. Hang in there. Many blessings to you. Then we have Michelle Smith coming in. Let me grab your timestamp here and spring up here. I don't think, did I see, I don't think I saw a posting, but here you said for love. So I think you're wanting a love reading. So hopefully that's true. So let's take a look here, Michelle. What does, and thank you for your donation via Z Cash app. Alright, so let's take a look. What does spirit want you to know here around love? So what's this? This one is on the top, but these things are underneath it. Underneath and underneath. Let me scooch these over. Because I feel like we got this one and this one as well. This one here too, wanted to be seen and those two. So there was two more. Alright. So let's, we'll put it up here for now. Let me take a quick sip here to keep my little throat working well here. So the bottom of the deck, you do have the ace of swords. The ace of swords is this energy of clarity and new communication. I feel kind of too, coming in here regarding love. So this is good energy. I like clarity. Whenever it comes to love, we can use all the clarity we can get, right? But I do feel like new communication. We'll find out more here as we dive in. You do have the five of cups. So some movement away from low vibration emotion into higher vibration emotion with the wheel of fortune next to it. Yeah. Wheel of fortune is the tune of for you, the four tune. And so the wheels are changing and turning here and I feel like they're changing and turning because of this five of cups. It's like the combination of those two has this. I understand now why I went through what I went through. So I feel like you've been doing a lot of inner work and a lot of transformation that's been coming in with this where you've been looking at those emotions that you felt and going, You've been looking at those emotions that you felt and going, why did I feel that way? Why? Did that, what fear was below that? Um but so a lot of transmutation and transformation of emotion. But uh, but the big, the big piece that they're focusing on, and there's clarity that's coming in is. Ah I see now why that, why I wanted that to happen for me. So I could experience that emotion so that it would be, this fear would be brought to my face, so I could be freed from that. So I won't take it into an, an uh, a new relationship in the future. So I like that energy. Then you have the five of pentacles, you have these fives. Big feelings and big changes that you've been going through, the five of pentacles, fives are a number of changes and. Like conflicts that change. This one is the change of uh like fears and. Emotions and beliefs around lack, the fear being left behind, being left under the cold, not being enough, uh not having enough. And so I feel like that is, uh as a result of this, this is a lot of this reflection with these fives. Are things that you've been looking at. Two underlying energies, yeah, transformation with the hanged man. So seeing things from a different perspective, uh and this, you know, change of like caterpillar to butterfly and you've been. Going through this, letting pieces of yourself go that don't serve you anymore. So definitely transformative energy that's being celebrated and. And acknowledge that you've been doing the work and you've been releasing these things. And, and we'll see what's unfolding here. The other card below the surface here, yeah, the judgment card. So both of these. Major arcana of the hanged man and the judgment card are about seeing things from a different perspective, transformation. Way, a wake-up call that you've had in your life with that judgment card blowing the horn, your higher self. Showing you things from a different perspective. And because of this, this is what this transformation has brought. Let's see where you're going now. I feel like this, up to this point has been. Not that you need validation, but a validation from spirits always good, from humans eh, right? But from spirit, we're like. Cause we know the cat, they know the, the truth of things. Other people, you're always wondering. You know, well, when their human characters were unstable and fickle, right? You're like, eh, do I really believe what people say? Meh, but spirit, we listen to. This is what they're saying, they're validating and that you've been putting in this, you've been transforming. You've been releasing these old beliefs that don't serve you anymore. Yep, and the three of ones, this is you with new information, changing directions. Going into this, you're never going to experience relationships like you have in the past. Your energy doesn't match those anymore, you don't draw them to you. You're gonna be drawing in higher vibrational. Relationships and, and people into your life and events because of this work that you've been doing. But it is gonna be different. Maybe even a bit dull. It's funny. Not in a, in a, it's like undramatic is a, is a, the word that they wanna use, but they were like dull. Because it can feel that way when we're used to drama and anxiety and all this stuff. When we get into healthy relationships, they sometimes feel like, where's all the excitement of the drama? Well, if you want drama, we can bring you drama. We're like, no, 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 wait, 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 wait. Uh but I like this, cause this is a change of a different direction than you've had in the past, so I like this. You have the six of swords, again, leaving behind old ways of thinking and movement. Uh into newer ways of thinking, higher ways of thinking. It is an energy of moving from choppy waters to calmer waters, but it is about, because you've had mindset changes. You're gonna see changes that happen differently in the outside world and it's activating movement in the outside world. In fact, I feel like with this three of ones, it's about. Changing where you hang out, change things in your life, even where you live, where you work, uh. Where you go for groceries, where you go for, you know. Restaurants and different things, it's like try new things, move into do different ways of looking at stuff because I feel like. If you stay on the path that you're normally on, you, you, you're living parallel lives, you're not gonna bump into one another. But with you making changes, they're making changes, you guys do bump in and your, your roads cross because of that. Underneath that, yeah, you have the moon card. The changes of cycles, the ending of old, the beginning of new, the full moon of fruition, the new planting new seeds. I really like that energy. Of following your heart, cause there's a lot of emotion around the moon energy. So following that uh is important for you here too, cause there is a lot of emotion. Um all of this, but I definitely feel like there is love headed your way, cause they're, they're guiding you to where you can bump into them, right? Let's see, yeah, they have a little more preparation with the eight of cups. And you got the death and the rebirth card. So again, it's, you're, you're reborn as a butterfly, you're not gonna want. The same things as you did before. Caterpillars love to munch on leaves and, you know, all that butterflies pursue nectar. They want the blossom and the nectar from the blossom and they can go thousands and thousands and thousands of miles, right? Um and a caterpillar never could. And so there, there is this energy of. Follow and do the new things, cause the, you know, if we keep doing the old stuff. That's just gonna keep getting, giving us what we've always gotten before, but it's about making these changes and allowing them to flow in the outside world. The eight of cups, when I said there's a little bit more work to do, the eight of cups is that energy of. Doing like an emotional inventory, and this is what you've been doing. You've already been doing a lot of this emotional, like inner work, right? Suppressed emotions that have been there for, for a very long time, right? You've been doing a lot of that work, um and so continue to do that because you've been getting back more and more of your emotional energy. And building up your emotional bank, which is a big thing of what they're preparing you to do. Because that does bring in. The more we fill up our emotional bank. Um then our heart goes, alright, we can bring in a relationship because we have, we have the emotional energy to invest in it, but if we're. Close to bankrupting our emotional bank, the heart is like, hell no, I'm not gonna allow anyone to come in, right? They're like, nope, 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 not gonna attract them, not yet, nope, nope, nope. And but the, so you've been doing all this inner work and all these emotions, all this energy. That has been taken to keep those emotions suppressed as you're transmitting them, you get that energy back. But this, the other part is like, and you've been doing a little bit of this, but I feel like. With the eight of cups, it's like really evaluating all of your relationships that you're in right now. Friends, family, coworkers, wherever, wherever you're investing emotional energy out into any relationship of any kind. Even, I never, this is the first time they brought this, your energy investing in your relationship with work is a relationship too. And it's about where am I over giving? And uh giving seventy, eighty, ninety percent and it's only giving me back ten, twenty, thirty percent, that would be work, right? We always feel like we give so much and get so little back. Hmm, maybe some of that emotional energy you can get back from your work, but it's also people and there might be some where like, yeah, those need to go, I know them. You get all that emotional energy back. Others, you might be like, well, I wanna give them a chance, I don't wanna end that re- relationship. But I realize I'm the one keeping it alive, I'm gonna back off to fifty percent. And if they make up the difference, hey, we'll keep it going. If they don't, it drifts apart and then you can take back all the other fifty percent. But this is all about, you know, developing and. Um getting all this emotional energy back to prepare you for love, love, love. So I like that for you, Michelle. Alright, so that's what they have for that. Let's see what else we have here for your fortune cookie, alright, this one. And you've got leadership, like a whole new world. There's the butterfly of transformation we're talking about. You got this whole new world available to you now that you haven't explored. Says, we all lead by example, our words and actions presenting a role model to everyone that we come into contact with, like. We teach people how to treat us by how we treat ourselves. That's the kinda phrase that's in my head. This card asks you to take an ownership of your personal leadership qualities. And to align your thoughts and your words and your actions with everything that you wish to see in the world. There's this great, um. I think it was, let me see, I think I have it right here. I got an email today, I'm on an email list from the love insights. Uh Daniel from the love insights, I'm just gonna read it real quick. It says. What if the world isn't telling you anything new, but simply reflecting what you're already radiating? What you're experiencing in your life is not random. It's not a punishment or a reward. It's a mirror, a precise reflection of your inner state. Your dominant thoughts, recurring emotions and deepest beliefs. Reality did, reality doesn't respond to effort, it responds to alignment. The universe doesn't give you what you want, it gives you what you are vibrationally, emotionally and energetically. Your physical world is an effect, not a cause. Trying to change it without shifting your inner state is like trying to change your reflection without moving. And yes, there's a delay, but that delay is sacred. It projects, I'm sorry. It protects you from your emotional ups and downs. Yeah, so that's, delays happen to give us time to be consistent, right? It asks, will you hold your frequency even when nothing seems to be happening? True creation is not about force, it's about constancy. The shift happens when you stop identifying with the character, character. And return to the player, the one who observes, who chooses and who creates from center. Appreciation, conscious breathing, movement, presence, these aren't distractions. They're tools that realign your frequency, because in the end, you don't get what you want. You get what you are. And when you shift who you are, the mirror has no choice but to reflect it. Isn't that awesome stuff? I love it. So that is what they have for you, Michelle and for whoever else that was for too. I feel like that was for more than just you and me. So whoever uh that was for, so I love that. And thank you again so much for your donation. I greatly appreciate that. And many blessings to you. Alright, so Sanali Fakur, you are up. Next, let me grab your timestamp here. So Sanali, thank you again for your donation. Let me take a quick sip here, gotta stay hydrated. Keep those vocal cords. Alright. Uh so I wanted to know here, Sue, is that Sue Rob's intentions towards you? He asked you out, does he have feelings for you? Alright. So let's take a look here. What are his intentions towards you? And then does he have feelings for you? Alright. I feel like I want those two as well. Alright. We will see what we got going on here. Bottom of the deck, we do have the ten of wands here. Ten of wands, that's a lot of energy. You know, the wandsuit is fire, there's a lot of fire, a lot of passion here. So we'll, we'll find out what this means here, but there, there definitely is a lot of like. Um uh energetic connection or. Attraction, passionate attraction. So not emotion, this is like a lot of like, wow, you know? Like when someone has the hots for someone, right? Which isn't bad, we want someone to have the hots for us, but not just the hots for us, I get it. Let's see here, what are their intentions towards you? Wow, well, they do have the lovers card here, so they do want more than just the passion. Well, we'll see here, we got two other cards, cause sometimes passion can be the foundation of someone. Like that's what they make the foundation of their relationship, like this is the most important thing. I want a relationship, cause I want, you know, sex. But let's see what else they have here. Got the page of cups, yay! So we got emotion, they do want higher emotion. So I like that. They're, they're definitely want emotion involved in there, and the five of cups too. So they are looking for a different type of love than they've had in the past, cause I feel like they've been ha- they have had some. You know, lower vibrational, not so good relationships where the other person. Didn't treat them too well and, and so they don't want with, you know, the, they want higher emotion. Not lower emotion and a lot of passion here. So I definitely feel like their intentions do not feel like they're just trying to get. You know, something from you. They really do have intentions of seeing is, is, are you someone that can fulfill that? For them. Uh let's see what kinda feelings they have for you, yeah, queen of ones. They do see you as someone who's passionate, so they do feel like. You can definitely bring them that energy, bring them that passion and that fire. It also is an energy of that you're, you're very attractive. They do definitely feel that. Seven of ones. They do see you as someone that's really true to your authentic self, that you don't dim your light. For others, you don't ask permission to shine, which means that you are, are. You have like this authentic energy where you are you, you don't try to pretend to be someone else, you don't, you know. Um play games, you're like, this is me, if you don't like it, tough, right? And they like that about you, um that's their perception of you anyway, that you're that way, uh and I like that. And the magician energy too. So there's a lot of fire here, you know, they. I don't feel like they. Like. Know you enough to have feelings for you like emotionally, from their standpoint. They've got all this attraction energy, they have intentions of, I wanna get to know you, cause I want emotional connection. Is that, is that gonna work out between us? So I'm attracted to you, gonna ask you out. And I'm gonna spend time with you, I need to understand how I feel about you, cause they do want emotion in here. Let's see what these extra cards are here, yeah. You got the king of cups, the balance between head and heart. And the four of swords, which is this energy of. Mental stability, but letting go of all these expectations. That's one thing they wanna check out too, just to see if you're, the expectations of what you want in a relationship are similar. Cause they're so, we, all of us have such different expectations, but it's about. The key to a, like a happy relationship is to have the least amount of expectations as possible. Focus on what you enjoy in someone instead of who they're not being. Are you matching the list that I need from you? If not. So I feel like they're wanting this balance, they're trying to find someone that just fits them mentally and emotionally together. And of course, physically and passionately, but um I feel like it's good stuff here. I don't feel like it's. A player kind of energy. They're not wanting to do things like they've done in the past and wanna be with people like they've been with in the past. They're looking for someone. That is a, like this fit um for them. And so you don't have to try to be, continue to be true to your authentic self and, and be who you are, because they're looking for that authenticity. And, cause if, if you put on a facade, as we know, and this is why you're, why you are true to your authentic self, you know, if I put on a facade. Eventually, they're gonna see behind the mask and if they don't like it, then it's not like it's gonna be. They're gonna stick around because, yeah, I fooled them for a while. You're like, I'm gonna be me and if it's a good fit, it's a good fit. If it's not, it's not. Continue to do that. Let's see what your fortune cookie says here too. So you've got open yourself to possibility, yeah. There's definitely possibility there, card number thirty-nine. Almost everyone holds some limiting beliefs about themselves. These perceptions block us from receiving the infinite support of the universe. We're the ones that go, no. This card is an invitation to reassess and to look beyond these limitations. And to recognize that in opening yourself to possibility, you automatically invite positive changes into your life. So less expectations and be open to possibilities. Just hang out and see what, what comes from it, right? So I like that for you. So that is what they have for you, Sanali. So many blessings to you. Again, thank you for your donation. Right, and then the last donation, we've got Sean G. So thank you, Sean G, for your donation via Z Cash App. And um this will be the last donation, just for everybody, like anyone that's watching, um. So the other readings will go faster, cause they're usually one to two card readings, they're not so in-depth, so hang in there. So the other readings will go faster, because they're usually one to two card readings, they're not so in depth, so hang in there. Things will speed up here in a moment. Alright, so Sean G wanted guidance for the weekend, let's take a look here, what does spirit wants you to know for the weekend? Alright, what do we have? Floating this weekend, I feel like that's underlying energy there, underlying energy there. Leading you to this, okay, what's going on? The bottom of the deck for the entire weekend, you get the nine of ones. Perseverance energy. Breaking through some blockades energy. Moving past some things that you have been feeling have been blocking you, so I like that. Let's take a look here for Saturday, you've got the knight of swords. So you got this clarity, communication, well, and the four of ones. So a gathering, a joyful celebration. Saturday, I feel like you get an invitation to go somewhere, or you have an invitation to go somewhere. And I feel like it's important for you to go, whatever this celebration gathering is. Cause the, the knight of swords is telling us that you will have. Communication that sparked from that, important communication, underlying energy, yeah, knight of pentacles. Is a slow moving energy. Um it is movement, just the slowest moving knight. But the underlying is that this is. An important beginning that gets things rolling, that will help. Bring abundance, bring fulfillment of the outside world later. So it's like important things on Saturday are planted. It initiates communication and gets things rolling. Um so it could be that you're meeting someone new, getting some new, what do they call that when you? Networking, such a overused word, but it is that where you get to meet an important contact. That gets some communication going and things, great conversation with this knight of um. Swords too, so if you get an invitation to go somewhere on Saturday, do it. Sunday, you've got the nine of cups, yeah, this emotional fulfillment, this joy type of energy. Uh what else do we have here? The emperor, we like that energy, Aries, new beginnings. Take and charge uh type of energy about your future, what your dream come true, yeah, and even the queen of pentacles. So there is this energy here with, on, on Sunday especially. Following your joy, following your dream, you deciding what you want to do with the emperor energy. Making plans, putting energy behind it, but it is important with the queen of pentacles that it's from your heart. And that it's um like mother nature, mother nurture energy that comes in with this. So I do like that, the underlying energy underneath that fourth cups. So it is time here, I feel like there's some emotional stagnancy regarding your dream. And I just feel like Sunday brings in a spark. Like a new way of looking at it, you're returning to your why, you're returning to your heart. That allows you to, you know, do this, and it's kind of some stuff that I've been, went through with being sick last week. Kind of realized, you know, I'm investing a lot of energy in a lot of different things that I want to get back to basics. And get back to my, what I love to do, which is doing readings, lives, want to offer more giveaways, I want to. You know, clear out a lot of clutter of stuff that I would doing so much stuff and get it down to. Things that I want, I'm excited about, and I am gonna be doing a new podcast probably in the future. That, like a weekly smaller podcast, that just focuses on, you know, living the best life. Or the, you know, what makes the, the path the easiest or whatever, so it's like. Whatever your passion is, it's like, I'm, I'm a renewed passion, I feel like for Sunday. All of that to say that, it's like you just get excited about it, could even tell. My, my, my excitement started to change differently, like, oh, I can't wait, can't wait to figure it out, can't wait to, you know, see what this is gonna look like. And so I like that, a rejuvenation of your dream on, on rejuvenation, reactivation, new spark. New inspiration for your dream on Sunday. Then these other two cards is like, at the end of the weekend, going into next week, this is what you're going with here. Yeah, the two of pentacles, the balance of the outside world. Kind of juggling two things though. I feel like you're. Simplifying, getting things down to two, I'm gonna do this and I'm gonna do this, not, I'm gonna do this and this and this and this, so you can. Uh focus your energy more on two, two things. Five of swords, the balance between the head and the heart. So getting in out of your head of this supposed to be and this should be, and allowing the heart. To guide you here, and the queen of swords, yeah, balance between the head and the heart, there's all this balance, balance, balance. Feel like, you know, you, with all three of these cards, you end up feeling very balanced and very. You know, by the end of the weekend with all of this too, so I like that for you. Very strong, I know balance is my big thing, I got out of balance and. Now with the um, leaving a lot of the other videos I've been doing. Um they're like, you're done with those, we're gonna focus on something else, let all that go, I'm like, really? I don't want to let people down, that's our fear, right? Letting people down, it's like, no. Um when I'm giving from my heart, like exactly as you're giving from your heart. Um then that, it's more impactful than feeling like you're doing something because you're supposed to, right? So let's see what your fortune cookie says here for you, Sean. Yeah, what did I say at the beginning? Persevere, the nine of ones was persevere energy. Who would have thought that a humble acorn could grow into a mighty oak tree? But of course, this takes time. Whatever you're involved in, this card brings a message of reassurance. Your hard work and continued effort and dedication will come to fruition. You are asked to persevere and trust, ooh, I love that. Alright, so that's what they have for you, my dear, thank you again for your donation, greatly appreciate that. Alright, so as I said, um that was the um last of the donations. So next, I do have two of my YouTube channel members, my monthly YouTube channel members. They get um. First priority, these are gonna be free readings, so they are just one to two cards. Uh and then after that, we'll jump into the long list of the other free readings too. So like I said, these will go faster, once I'm done, I will post a pinned comment on the um video itself. That will have all the names with all the timestamps, so you can just click on it, go directly to your reading, so. Uh if you're like, uh I have the list in the description box too. You want to see when we're gonna be doing it, if you're hanging out, watching live, you'll know when those readings will come up for you. Alright, but up first, we do have Lolita, let's grab your timestamp here. Alright, so Lolita. Can we see if a romantic counterpart is coming this year? Let's take a sip here. Alright. Will. You have a romantic counterpart come in this year, based on current energies? About this too, alright. Who knows, who knows? You got the moon card, which is mother lunar energy. And you have the five of swords, the balance between the head and the heart. This does tell me that there is a possibility of a romantic counterpart coming in this year. But there is some um battling going on between what your. What your head is allowing your heart to do. What I mean by that is. So in the beginning, when our, like when our little emotional inner child is being formed, when we're seven years old and younger. It does all sorts of emotional things, the moon card, a lot of emotion, right? And. It gets punished a lot, our seven year old and under for throwing tantrums and crying. Um you know, and, and it's taught to push all that emotion down below the surface. And then our mind forms between seven and fourteen, our higher mind. Not our higher mind, but our human mind. And it goes, you know, all that stuff you're doing, we, you have to go into the cellar, because you throwing tantrums. You having those emotion, uh you know, emotional outbursts is causing us trouble. For our safety, I'm gonna put you in the basement. And I'm gonna form, the mind is gonna form a lot of construct to keep us safe. From all these emotional outbursts, well. That's good for survival until we're old enough to take care of ourselves, and then. The mind still bullies our heart going, no, 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 it keeps it in a cage and the basement and a straitjacket. In a soundproof room going, you're not gonna be able to act out, or it keeps on a little, one of those little child harnesses. Nope, 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 really not allowing the, the heart to do a whole lot of things, well, this is that conflict. And with this moon card is, it's like, the emotion has become so big, you can't ignore it anymore. And the heart is having a rebellion against the mind to say, I want what I want. And. The more that we can do to help our heart with the rebellion, talking to our mind. Saying, thank you for protecting us, but we don't need those anymore. All those constructs, all those fears, all those alarms, all these beliefs, we need to release these, because they no longer serve. But then, you know, the mind needs something to do, it's like, well, how about you serve the heart? Instead of trying to control it, and the mind's like, I couldn't do that, as long as I have a job to do, I'm happy. Um they don't need to be in charge, they're like that, I just thought that's what I needed to do, and like, you did a good job, you kept us safe, we're alive, thank you. But now we need to switch the, you know, at least have it, you know, the heart has fifty one percent holding. And the mind has forty nine, so that the heart always has a little more to have us have this journey of life. And that allows us to cut away these expectations and thoughts and beliefs that don't serve, that allow. Romance to come in because. It, it's allowing us to. Strip away limiting thoughts and beliefs that don't serve, and like I said, emotions that don't serve, energy that doesn't serve. Um physical things in our world that don't serve. So the conflict is being worked out, but the moon is, the moon is the, the representation of the. In your case, the heart having a rebellion, and it's important for you to. Just have a, a good gratitude of the mind, but then. Uh kind of, as they say, coming to Jesus party, go ahead, alright, thank you for all this, but we need to make some changes so that. We can have happiness, because the heart is what brings us happiness. The mind just brings us completion of things. So it's a, a change that um can come in here, and hopefully that makes sense. Alright, so that's what they have for you Lolita, so many blessings to you. And then Livia Bagara, you are up next, let's grab your timestamp here. Alright, hello my dears, you wanna know, will things turn out? Traveling with your four-legged furry kids, will you have the company help you um in the future? Alright, let's take a look here. So we'll pull one card here for the four-legged furry friends, and then the other one will. Will the company help with you in the future? Okay, that one here, alright, so the journey with the four-legged friends. You have the seven of ones, I like this energy, seven of ones is. Then energy being true to your authentic self, shine bright, don't ask permission to shine. And, and this is good, because in, what I'm feeling with this energy is if, if I worry. That it's not gonna do well, people are gonna, you know, be upset, blah, 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 blah. Then people will, because that's what I, my energy is wanting. That, that's what our energy is telling. The world that we want to experience, it's gonna bring it to us. But if instead I look at it with an energy of, you know what, this is gonna go great, people are gonna love my babies, my fur babies. And uh I can't, you know, wait for them to be able to experience other people and people experience them. It's gonna go smoothly, then we invite that in, so I definitely like this, this is like saying, just be true, just be bold. Be like, these are my fur babies and I love them, and. You know, if people are like, well, we don't normally do that, I understand it, just I love them so much, I can't leave them behind. They have to be with me, and they're like, okay, I get it, I feel like that kind of energy for it, so that's good news. And will the company help you in the future? Ace of Cups. Ace of Cups is a happy, happy um energy, so yeah, um that is an affirmative for that. Again, this, this energy of the seven of ones helps it too, when we realize, you know what? When we're confident in who we are, then other people are also confident, you know, it's like. It was when I was coming out, because I was like, you know what? If I'm okay with myself, everyone else feels okay with me, if I have self doubt, then other people have self doubt about me. So my, everything is a mirror reflecting back to us, who we are, right? And so if you. Um help yourself, then other people will help you, right? If you have positive energy like with your fur babies, then other people will too. So I feel like the energy really applies to both situations there. That, yeah, what I have for myself will be reflected on the outside world, if I'm scared, guess what? Self fulfilling prophecy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna draw in and see what I'm fearing, right? But if I'm loving and joyful towards myself and my fur babies and other people, love is gonna be all around, right? We don't have to worry. So hopefully that helps, that's what they have for you right now, my dears, many blessings to you. Alright, let me just scroll here. So thank you guys again for all your patience in getting to your readings, so I'm gonna bring some of these free readings over here. And we'll start with the non-membership uh free readings, so let me just. Scoot some of these, so we can move faster down there, alright. Alright, so first we've got Hot Sun, let me grab your timestamp, there we go. So Hot Sun, hello, you wanna know what are Josh's feelings and tensions? And next actions towards you in the bottom of the deck, alright, let's take a look here, so. What are their feelings and intentions? Et cetera, bottom of the deck, you got the king of swords. King of swords, rolls over air, right? King of swords, they'll get a second portion too. Big thinkers really in their head a lot, that's the underlying energy is like. Really stuck in this steam and smoke coming out of their ears, thinking, 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 thinking. So we've got the nine of swords, again, a lot of thinking, right, a lot of beliefs. Nine of swords is like nightmare and insomnia, you know, but it's a, getting tired of expectations, getting tired of fears and thoughts and beliefs. Seven of ones is wanting to be true to their authentic self, not wanting to ask permission to shine. Not dimming their light for no one, not defending their actions and who they are. So this energy just feels a lot like, you know, when we're talking about feelings and tensions and next actions. I just feel like they're. Wanting to dump all of this, supposed to be and should be and need to be and have to be. And I just want to be me, can I just be me? I'm, I just feel like they're having all of this. Fear around disappointing and not being enough and not being who they are supposed to be, this is that overthinking, right? But they've got all this stuff from way before they met you, that was already in their noggin. Of what they think things are supposed to be and what they think everyone else expects of them, which is not true, it's all different from each one of us, right? But I just feel like they're stuck in that mental loop and. And I don't feel like. I feel frustration coming up where it gets to the point of. I just want to enjoy the adventure and not worry about intentions and next actions and. Well, where's our relationship, or you know, all that kind of stuff just drives them nuts, I feel like. Like I don't want to define stuff, I've been trying to over define things for so long. This is gonna be me, can I just be me, can I just go with the flow, can we just see where things go? Why, why, you know, but they've got this. Fear of being a disappointment and, and because of all that. So hopefully that makes sense, Hot Sun, that's what's coming in right now, alright. So many blessings to you. Alright, and then Atashi Singh, you are up, whoops, let's grab your timestamp here. Let's grab your correct timestamp there, there we go. So Atashi, what is the relation you have with SSP and JZ? Right, we'll pull a card here for SSP and then one for. JZ, so SSP, what is the relationship you have with SSP? Got the ten of ones, ten of ones, there's a lot of fire between you and SSP here. It almost feels like a burden. With the relationship, I just feel like, you know, maybe there is these feelings of a lot of expectation. with the relationship. I just feel like, you know, maybe there is these feelings of a lot of expectations, a lot of energy that has to be invested. It feels like it's a lot of work in a way with the Ten of Wands here with them. And just kind of sit in this energy, it just feels like go, 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 go. It almost be like, uh, and no judgment with all this. It's like with someone with ADHD, right? Um, or ADD, which is, you know, constant movement, constant changing of subject, constant change and not a lot of progress. And that's what this Ten of Wands feels like. It's like all this stuff going up one space at a time because it's always all over the place. It's never like focused. It's like hard to focus energy. Uh, and that's the ADHD, which is, there's so many train tracks, everything's running on that anything. There's like 10 things happening at the same time, can only go up one piece at a time. Instead of having one thing go 10 spaces, 10 things go one space. Feels like things are just like, it's so much energy for so much little progress, if that makes sense. And then Jay-Z, we've got the Two of Swords. The Two of Swords, the relationship between is a battle between the head and the heart here. And I feel like with this one, you might be feeling like a lot of, I would say like inconsistencies, because it feels like there's one moment they're this and the next moment they're this. One moment they're here, the next moment they're back here. That's the difference when they're, I don't know, are they a Gemini? Because it's the energy of like split personality. But it's, it's not a, like a mental disorder. It's, they do have this energy of their heart and their head and their, their, the mind wants this and their heart wants this. And that's why it feels like they're wanting two different things because they do. That's what goes on inside of their heads here. So I feel like a little bit of frustration today with you, with these two individuals. It's just like, why, why does, why do things have to be so difficult, right? This is the kind of energy I'm feeling in here. And I feel like it's okay. I, Venus just moved into Taurus tonight. Venus, the planet of love, rolls, it rolls over Taurus. So it's very comfortable with this grounding energy. So I feel like over the next three or four weeks, I think it's in there for three or four weeks. It is a flowy energy. It's a grounding emotional energy. I feel like you're about to feel a change happen in both of these relationships where things do feel a bit more grounded and balanced with them. But don't get used to it. But it's, it's a good opportunity to really understand them, to go, you know what? It's best is to try to, instead of trying to control who someone is, try to understand who someone is because you're not going to be able to change them. But understanding them allows you to change your perception and approach to them, if that makes sense. So that's what they got for you right now, Atashi. Hopefully that makes sense. So many blessings to you. Right. And then Nelly Maderos, you are up. Thank you so much for your donations earlier. This is your free reading. A general for July. All right. Let me take another sip here. All right. So a general for July. Can you believe? We're almost a week into June already. Wish, wish, wish. All right. Okay, we got one card there. I thought there was two. What else? All right. And this one here. All right. So whoops, let me do it this way. So you have the Temperance card. I know patience, yay, but it is alchemy and things are moving forward. And the page of Pentacles does show a fruition of something. Something that with this Temperance card, it's something that's been going back and forth and slowly growing. Maybe you've been a lot of, have a lot of patience toward it. I, I don't want to stretch it to say that you've been totally patient with this thing. I feel like you've been learning patience and your patience has been tried. But you're like, I'm sticking with it. I'm being patient. I know there's progress. I know it's going to be worth the wait. And it is, the page of Pentacles is the fruition of whatever this has been going on for a while. Something that you've been waiting for, investing time and energy and patience into. You're about to see the fruition come here in July. So I feel like you'll know what that is because it's something that has been really trying the patience and growing the patience and you've really learned to be patient with. Uh, it's been going for a while, but you're about to see the fruition of that come, come to pass. So I like that for you. It's my hat. My hat is an interesting, uh, shape right now. I just noticed after how many hours? Anyway, that's what they have for you, my dear. So many blessings to you. All right. And then Victoria, you are up next. So Victoria, you were Ramirez. Hello, hello. So what's coming towards you in the upcoming week? Let's take a look here. What does spirit wants you to know here? This one and this one. Oh, you do have the Two of Swords and the King of Cups. So Two of Swords is an important decision that's coming up here. And I feel like you're going to be kind of drawn into two different directions. The King of Cups is a balance between head and heart. And so I feel like there's a few decisions that come up here. And I like this because when, you know, we'll go to our minds usually right away and go, all right, well logically, this is what I should do. The mind's giving you all the facts, their facts. Doesn't mean that's all the facts, but they're giving you all their facts to support the, the decision that they feel you should be making. But the heart wants to be heard too, the King of Cups, which is the balance, you know, behind the scenes. All kings get a second portion of swords. So air energy, thinking energy. So they're a balancer of head and heart. And the Two of Swords is about the struggle between the head and the heart. So it's closing your eyes and opening your heart to see what your heart has to say. And it's like allowing both of them to have a seat at the table next week when you need to make important decisions. Because if you make decisions strictly from the mind, our heart's not going to be happy. It's going to feel like we're existing. If we make decisions only from our heart, it can be emotional, not very logical and have impact there. But when we bring both together and allow both to present their sides, we can come with a compromise that's both logical and, uh, our heart is happy with. If we let both of them present things. And that's what I like here for you for this upcoming week is those decisions that come in, allow both to have their say. And then you get to decide being the observer, what you want to do with those. So I like that for you, Victoria. Hopefully that helps for your week coming up. So many blessings to you. And then Menahil, you are up. So thank you so much. Here we got your question here. So is Murad, Murad, your future spouse? All right. Based on current energy, let's take a look here. Are they future spouse based on this energy? Let's see. Nope, 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 nope. So sorry. But because you have the High Priestess, which is about, she goes away to her High Priestess Tower, away from the chaos to understand herself and move forward. And the Eight of Pentacles is about putting in the work and the blood, the sweat, the tears that eventually brings reward later, which feels more like they are more of a stepping stone for you to understand things about yourself than your future spouse. So I don't feel like they are your future spouse, but they, you definitely learn stuff about yourself through it because they are one of the stones that helps you towards your future spouse. So, um, you know, definitely look into what you're learning through the situation here. All right. So that's what they have for you, Menahil. So many blessings to you. Then we have Supernova, Nova Rodriguez, you are up. Get your timestamp here. Good to see you, my dear. Hope you're doing well. And so you said, question for, excuse me. So I was sick last week, still recovering. I'm not back to, let me just throw a cough drop in here. As I read your, uh, messages here, see if, oh, you finally performed. Oh my gosh. So happy for you. You did it. You actually enjoyed it. Yay. So what's, uh, Spirit guides and Kurt's advice for you? Should you continue? Cause you, uh, cause you definitely, I think you said can, right? So interestingly enough, a lady said you had a Nirvana grunge vibe to your songs. Hmm, I wonder why Kurt maybe? Yeah, right. The influence of the energy. Or maybe you, maybe you influenced Kurt when you were on the other side. Wouldn't that be it? Like, you know, Kurt's vibe of Nirvana was because you were his spirit guide. But he was going through all that. You know, like, that's my influence. No, Kurt didn't influence me. I influenced him. Singing on the stage and playing a guitar. I love that. All right. Let's take a look here. What do they want you to know here? Whoops. Sorry, all these cards flying out here. Let's try that again. Let me shuffle one more time. So one card came by itself already, which is a great card. You got the full card. I'll show you that here in a sec. All right. What is this other one here too? Yeah, okay. Uh, I definitely feel like this is a yes. You've got the Wheel of Fortune, which is the tuna for you. It's definitely for you. And, um, Onia asked, are they proud of you? Yes. The full card is about a new adventure. Free, full of possibilities. Don't put expectations around it. Allow yourself to move forward in it. It is fortunate. It is for you. It brings abundance, the wheels of fate. Uh, with the Wheel of Fortune, it's faded. This is for you. It's what you came down here to do. It's who you are. And so they definitely are proud of you for taking a step forward. They've, they're proud of you every second anyway. There's no time they're not proud of you. Just coming down to this planet, they're proud of us going, holy hell, you know, that we are willing to come down and feel this lower vibration and this, you know, all of this energy of, of, I feel like I want to turn my head around. All this energy of lower vibration and fear and, and, I don't know, just the experience of humanity is such a challenging one compared to any others. When we come down here, they're just like, we're courageous, brave souls. They're very happy that we've made these, you know, this choice and, and all this. So they're always proud of you. And there's like, yes, go forward. Keep doing this. It's fortunate. This is for you. It's a new adventure, but just don't try to restrict yourself and get caught up in supposed to be's and should be's. Just do it and enjoy it. Uh, and I love that is their biggest, like their advice is don't get caught up in these ideas of, okay, now this needs to happen and this needs to happen, this needs to happen. Enjoy the adventure, enjoy the flow of, of it all. And they are with you there. You know, definitely there, but I, I love that. Kurt put that energy around this person to come up to you so that you would know that he was with you um, the whole time. And he always is with you. But he wanted to make sure, you know, that you got an external validation of that from someone and you're like, what? Are you kidding me? So I love that and they love you so much. But that's what they have for you Nova. Congratulations. I'm so happy. I'm proud of you. We are proud of you. So way to go. All right. So many blessings, my dear. All right. And then we have Meenu. You are up next here. Let me grab your timestamp. So you want to know who is coming towards you in love soon? All right. Let's take a look here. Who is coming towards you in love soon? This one and this one here. Uh, well, evidently someone is, you got the lover's card. So you definitely have someone coming towards you in love soon. And then the Eight of Wands. This energy of the Eight of Wands is about fast, fast out of nowhere. It's a lot of energy that comes in here. And I like this. It's very passionate. It's very sudden. It's unexpected. It's like, whoa. And then they're there kind of energy. Fire energy is really coming through very strong here. If you're not wanting children, be very careful. That's all I'm going to say with this energy that's coming in with this. Hot and heavy, whoa, this attractive energy that just draws you guys together here. So I definitely feel like it's a fire signy type of energy. So it can be someone who is of course an Aries, a Leo or a Sagittarius. But it's just this passion, this draw of energy. But it is, it's sudden. It comes out of nowhere. It's unexpected. It's someone you don't know. It's just like the, whoa, at least in this lifetime, you don't know them. But I do feel a strong connection between the two of you. Um, because this fire energy of, uh, the fire signs is really standing out here and really drawing, drawing you guys together. It's like they almost, it's almost like a past life connection with someone where when you meet him, you're drawn so close, so fast to them. You feel so comfortable. You even, it's like they're glowing in the dark as I joke that, and they have a rainbow shooting out of their butt. And you're like, oh, that must be them. It's going to be that obvious. It's like, wow, you know? So I feel like that's who is being drawn towards you right now. I don't necessarily feel like this is a forever person. It's more of like a, whoa, as fast as they arrive, they also disappear out of your life. But it brings a huge impact and, uh, gives you different perspectives and different things in life too. So that's what's coming in for you right now. So many blessings, Meenu, Meenu. Right. And then Pisces, you are up. Let's grab your timestamp. So Pisces, you want to know, have you already met your future spouse? If not, then when? All right. Let's take a look here. Have you met your future spouse already? All right. That's that one. All right. And this must be, they're giving you two for the one or the other one. Wow. Well, Ten of Pentacles is a relationship energy. It's one of my relationship cards. Let's see what these other two cards are here. Yeah, you know, the Four Pentacles is a home energy and the Judgment card is about seeing things from a different perspective. These two Xs at the top, representing card number 20. Endings and beginnings, endings and beginnings. I do feel like you've met your future spouse, but I feel like it's been a while since you've seen them. And this home energy, I don't know if, if you live where you considered home growing up, like your hometown or the town at which your home was in when growing up. But I feel like it's someone that's been in and out of your life twice with these Xs. And I feel like you guys are going to bump into each other here. Sometime between now and October, because these tens are standing out to me too. But I feel like it's someone that you've had, not necessarily romantic relationships, but you've been in and each other's, out of each other's lives like twice. And this third time when they come back, they're different, you're different and things really connect. So it's interesting. So if you've had someone where like maybe in child, not childhood, it could be childhood. Cause it's about home when you were growing up. And could be like someone in your neighborhood and you, you were friends and then you weren't friends because they moved away. Then they came back and you bumped each other in high school and you hung out for a while. And then they moved away again. Now they're coming back a third time. Um, or you moved away and then you're coming back. Either way, it's like someone moved away and you guys came back, moved away, came back. This will be the third time. I feel. So hopefully that makes sense. That's what I feel is coming in for you, Pisces. So many blessings. You're like, no, not them, but it will be different because you both have changed. If it's that type of like, oh God, please don't let it be that one. Be open minded because you have changed. You're not who you were before and neither are they either. So you might be like, what? Who are you? All right. So that's what they have for you, my dear. And many blessings to you. And then Misha, you are up next. So Misha, your crush M, their current feelings for you. Let's take a look here. All right. You know, their current feelings here, they're more Three of Cups in a friend zone right now. And the Seven of Pentacles is the synergy of taking time. Last thing that grows on the fruit tree is the fruit. And so I kind of feel like there's this synergy of not really like, there is emotion there, but they're kind of keeping it in a friend. in a friend, like I don't know if you guys are all members in a friends group or something. But they're kind of going, I'm enjoying the friendship. Let me just see where things go and how things unfold. I don't feel like they're in a rush to get into a relationship with anyone. I feel like they're just kind of going let's see what happens in life and not really someone who's like super focused and super like charged to go in a certain direction. They're just kind of going along with life and seeing what unfolds. So that's kind of where they're at right now, Misha. I know, come on. But whenever we get a slow moving card, like the Seven of Pentacles, it does give us time to focus on what thoughts and beliefs no longer serve us to release and emotions that don't serve us anymore, energy that doesn't serve us, things in the physical world. It allows us to expand and raise our own love vibration, which gives us the ability to give and receive love to the outside world in a bigger way too. So I feel like it's, it's good that it's taking time because it's allowing you to make changes within you, but also giving them time to make changes within them. But um, by the time it happens, I don't feel like you're gonna have a crush on them anymore. Like I, I feel like as you guys evolve and change that your crush changes from them to someone else anyway. So I wouldn't worry a whole lot about it. I know the heart is crushing on who it is crushing. So just know, enjoy the crushing for what it is now, but just know there's a different crush that will take your breath away. So I like that. All right. So that's what they have for you, Misha. Many blessings to you. And then Mysterius, you are up. Let's grab your timestamp here. So Mysterius, you want to know when will La Alu talk, communicate with you in person? All right, whoops, okay. Car came flying out. Let's see what else we have here. No, this one. All right. So you've got the full card, which is the first card in the major, kind of which is a new beginning or a new adventure, full of possibilities without a lot of expectations and yeah, without a lot of expectations around it. Allowing it to be what it is. And but in the same breath with the King of Wands, the King of Wands is the ruler over the wand suit, which is about choosing what I want, right? When will they talk and communicate with me? Well, on one hand, it's uh, with the King of Ones. Again, we're gonna go two directions with the King of Ones. One of them is whatever I focus on is what grows and expands. If I'm, if I have a, I want and I need energy towards them, I want them to talk to me, I need them to communicate with me in person. Then I'm gonna push them away with that energy because need and want energy is lack energy. And it pushes things away. It, uh, our energy is saying, I want, I, I want to want, I want to need, so I can't have what I want or need, or I'll stop wanting and needing. Interesting, right? So instead you can focus on what, what do I love about the communication that we have had? Have I ever talked to him in person before? Think about those. Think about the gratitude you have for those experiences. And the more we have gratitude for what we have, what communication we have with them now, what communication we have had in the past with them, especially if it was in-person communication. Emphasize that. It's like you think about it, you picture it and go, I'm so grateful I had those. That draws it to us instead, right? The other hand of the King of Ones is whatever you like the King of Ones is, I, what do I want? Put a plan together and put action behind it. Um, so if you want to talk with them in person, if you haven't like put a lot of energy or like shared that you want to, it's time to put a plan together and go, you know what? I do want to talk with them in person. I'm gonna initiate it. That's the King of One's energy too, is initiating things. Me not waiting for something to happen, me taking action too. So right now it has to do with there's a lot of different possibilities, but if you refocus that energy to gratitude for what communication you have and have had, and then putting a plan together going, you know what? How can I communicate with them that I do want to talk with them in person? And how can I approach that in a way that I feel will be pleasant for them to want to, right? And so there is that, how am I gonna initiate to ask for what I want, right? So I feel like that's important there. Hopefully that makes sense, Mysterius. That's what they have for you. I know that's the scary thing. What? Ask for what I want. Are you crazy? All right. So many blessings to you. Then we have Fairy Tale up next. So Fairy Tale. You want to know who is your secret admirer? You know what? It's a secret. There won't be a secret admirer anymore if we bust them out. But let's find out. Let's see what spirit's willing to share with you here. Are you, it's on a need to know basis. Do you need to know right now? Let's wait up. So I feel like it's this one and this one here. All right. Interesting. We had the Five of Wands and the Eight of Cups. Now the Eight of Cups is an energy of like walking away from emotion that no longer serves. And the Five of Wands, normally the Five of Wands is like a conflict energy. But I also, I get every once in a while, I'll get energy of like, it's a part of a friends group. So it is someone that used to be part of a circle of friends, but they left the group. They left behind and walked away. And they've, haven't been in the group for a while. And so this is their, the person that was the secret admirer for you. But um, and the altercation wasn't with you, with this friends group. They had an altercation or conflict with someone in the group. And they were just like, I'm just like you were the reason why they wanted to stay in there, but everyone else was, were so conflicting with them that they were just like, I'll just be your secret admirer. And you know, see if I can eventually get up the, you know, cojones to, to share that with you. So hopefully that gives you a little input into who they are. Like hmm, can we think about who this one is, right? That's what they have for you, my dear. So many blessings to you. All right. And then Manal, you are up. Hopefully I'm saying that correctly. Let me grab your timestamp here. So uh, Manal, Manhal or Manal is the H silent, Manal? Uh, you want to know, does Hawaii, Awaes, A W A I S, do they have romantic feelings for you? All right, let's take a look here. All right. This one here. The feelings are deep, deep. We have the Hermit card. And the Wheel of Fortune here as well. So the Hermit card is they're very much to themselves and very much like a hermity type of energy. They find it difficult to I don't know if there's like socially, they just don't like big groups and big things and but I do, I did feel like here, cause the card was like past these other cards, like no, not that one, not that one, not one. This is the one. It's like the feelings are buried very deep with, with, and this Wheel of Fortune says it's good that it's buried that deep. Cause I really feel here that they do have romantic feelings for you, a lot of almost too many, but the Hermit card is almost a message for you here too that this one is not good to pursue for you. That there's something better down the road because when, when they're saying, well, they're a hermit and they, their feelings are very um, it's, it's fortunate for you that they are and that they're not being expressed because it doesn't feel like it would be ultimately be healthy for you. It's lower vibrational type of energies that it would bring in. So I feel like this is a good one to let go of and not pursue. It's in your best interest to let it go. I don't get that a whole lot. But it's a very strong message. So I would definitely be like, you know what? I'm gonna let them be and I'm gonna keep walking. That's the kind of energy that's coming in right now. So take it as you will, but I, I definitely feel like it's in your best interest to not pursue that. All right. So that's what they have. I know. So mysterious. All right. So many blessings to you. All right. And then we have Maria Amethyst Salentine. Hello, hello. So thank you for your patience in getting to your reading here. It looks like, okay, so you're wondering, how many kids do you see you having in life? You're thirty-two years old and abortion twenty twenty. Also under what grade you'll get on your exam in, on the tenth of June? Okay, Professor Strick, all right. So what we'll do here, so for free readings, we get two cards. So we'll pull one card to see what we can get for the, how many kids? Excuse me, in your life? What can they tell us about that? Okay. And then what score I feel is this card here? All right. How many kids in your life here? Well, you have the Ace of Cups, which is one love, one kid, one child. That's in there. That's based on current energies. So um, ace is one and there's not much more to say about that. And it's not the the um, abortion in twenty twenty. This is an actual child that um, is born and healthy and grows up and all of that. So I feel like one. I know you're like, what? Just one? But maybe one is enough. At least birthing from you. And it can be not, not to, you know, I'm not a licensed medical professional or anything. But it could be that there just might be complications as far as like, they're like, it's stopping at one is best for your health. And so you're like, yeah, I'm gonna do that because they're like, if you have a second one, it can be not good for the second child or for you. And so one is the, the gift, the beautiful gift, right? And then your exam, what are you gonna get? What kind of score? Uh-oh, death card. The death card, it's, it's not a um, doesn't mean fail. What are you telling us about this death card? Cause the death card is about an ending and beginning energy. It's interesting. I feel like the exam gets canceled with this and rescheduled. What's the, what's the tenth and the thirteenth? Does it get rescheduled to the thirteenth? The tenth is a Tuesday, right? Yeah. And then Friday, the thirteenth, oh my gosh, it gets scheduled for Friday, the thirteenth. But I do feel like it gets rescheduled there. Bottom of the deck, you have the Six of Wands. So I do feel like you're successful in it. You don't fail. But I feel like you're gonna have extra time to study with this death and rebirth card coming in here. But I do feel like something happens where it gets canceled and rescheduled. So you have a little bit of time and Six of Wands, the six is really standing out here. What would a six mean? Cause six out of ten would be sixty percent. That would be a D. I don't feel like that, that matches there. But I feel like take advantage, like based on current energy, they're like make sure to stay out of fear around your score. But use the time to really study and go into it with a victorious mindset, cause that gives you access to your, your mind here. And I feel like you do well on it. So you know, like you don't feel like you're gonna get an A, but um, but I do, cause I don't feel like a D doesn't feel right. Uh, fail doesn't feel right. A C doesn't even feel right. So I do feel like a B is more, more likely with this energy that I'm picking up here. So that's what's coming in for you, Maria, right now. So many blessings to you. All right. And then Culture Envy, you are up. Hello, hello. Good to see you. All right. So you'd like to know a general reading? Absolutely. Let me take a sip here real quick. All right. So what does spirit wants you to know right now? I got this one. Evidently that one too. That one's in the middle. So let's see what we got here. Your first card that came out is the Five of Cups. Which is about a movement and transformation of emotion. In the middle, you have the Seven of Cups. It's a lot of emotional energy here and the Seven of Wands. Which is a very powerful energy of being true to your authentic self and not dimming your light. I just feel here with all these, the Five of Cups and the Seven of Cups, feels like there's just a lot of emotional energy going on around you. Lot of people freaking out, a lot of people just expressing so many variety of all these different emotions all over the place. Feels very dramatic. And the Seven of Wands is like the energy, the, 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 what they're telling you, encouraging you is to, don't worry about feeling like, don't feel responsible for everyone else's emotional choices. Yeah, we can make it easier or harder for people to choose lower vibrational energy or unconditional love, you know? But we, we don't make that choice. You could give the, someone the world, they could still choose to be unhappy. So they're like saying, don't feel so concerned about feeling responsible for other people's emotional choices, cause those are theirs, but you can be focus on your emotional choices, what you're wanting to feel. And not to feel a certain way because other, you know, you've been taught, this is how you're supposed to feel and what you're supposed to feel, right? And it's like, no, you don't need to, to focus in on that, right? The Seven of Wands is about being true to your authentic self. Don't ask permission to shine. Don't dim your light. Don't defend, you know, feel the need to defend who you are and, and what should unfold, you know, allow yourself to be true to you. And allow other people to feel what they want to feel. That's their choice. That's their journey. Choose your own. And I feel like that's a big piece coming in here. It's like a secondary message of people look to you a lot to be the problem solver, be the person who is the glue that brings people together that, you know, solves people's issues, like you'll be the mediator and help people come back together and talk things out and you know, you'll be the go-between. They're like, no, none of that right now. Let everyone else figure out what they need to learn. They, we can become a crutch for people in being the person that solves things for them. It's time for people to grow up and to take care of themselves and to work things out. Now you can maintain your relationships with these individual people, but their relationships in between, none of your business right now. Come back to you, spend all your energy on you, let everyone else deal with their own stuff. In fact, that's what they want you to know right now. So even with customers, even with, with every area, family, friends, whatever. It's like coworkers. It's none of my business. Other people's emotional choices, none of my business. Um, I'll focus on how I'm feeling about things, right? Cause that's in your control. When you try to control those things out of control, you feel lost and oh my God, when you come back to here, you feel more solid. So hopefully that makes sense. That's what they got for you right now. All right. So many blessings to you. And let me bring more of these over here. Thank you guys again. When I'm done, I will post a pinned comment listing the readings and the timestamps next to them. So you can just click on them and find your reading. All right. Got a few more to go here. So BM Gamer, you are up. Up here. And you said you'd like, um, can you get a reading? Absolutely. Well, I didn't see another question. So we'll give you a general reading, see what spirit wants you to know right now. They know what's on your heart. So we'll see what kind of guidance they want to give. You have the Chariot and the Eight of Wands. So the Chariot card is the power of choice. It is victory. It is movement. There's a lot of cancer sign energy with it too. But the Chariot is the power. But the Chariot is the power of choice, and they're really bringing it in here that, you know. The power of choice means every moment we're making a choice of the story that we're applying to something. The emotion we're feeling about it, the energy that we're investing in our physical actions. Everyone i- is the only person that is in control of that for themselves. No one, like, we can't make someone think a certain way, feel a certain way. Invest their energy a certain way and do physical things a certain way. We can try and we can feel the disappointment when it doesn't, when they don't do what we think they should do. But we fell out of control when we're trying to control everyone else's emotions. We're taught we're responsible for everyone else's emotional choices, but we're not. You know, when we're growing up and people are like, you made your dad mad, you made your mom sad, it's like, oh, how powerful I am, I'm responsible for everyone else's emotions. But it also makes us think. Other people make me think a certain way, make me feel a certain way, like, they make me feel sad, they make me feel mad, and like, no, they don't. We've been brainwashed growing up, conditioned that I'm supposed to feel this certain way when this happens, but we don't have to. It's all opinion that we've been given all our lives. And we were so inundated with all this opinion, it became our opinion, became our habit, became our reaction. To think a certain way, to feel a certain way, invest our energy, act a certain way. But this, uh, Chariot card is telling you that, no, you have the power to change. The story, so when something happens, like, oh, this is what it should mean, but do I want it to mean that? No, I get to decide. When something happens, oh, I feel this way, is that really how I wanna feel? No, I can change that through habit, right? I can change my habit. Because that's how you formed all that before was through habit, you can change it too. Eight of Wands is about repetition for you, it's not normally what I get, but the Eight of Wands is. Energy, energy, invest it, invest it, invest it, invest it. And. Like, if I wanna change my energy around something and and. How I'm feeling about it, how I'm thinking about it, what I'm attracting with my energy, but I'm. What kind of physical energy I'm investing. I usually will set like a silent vibrating alarm on my phone. So I don't irritate everyone around me, but it goes out of every waking hour, like, come back to gratitude. Come back to this, is this what I wanna think? Because we get drawn out into the the old ways of thinking, because that's our habit. But bringing us back over and over again, repetition, bringing us back to a new way of thinking. A new way of feeling, a new way of acting helps change things too. So question, if what am I feeling, if I don't like how I'm feeling? How do I wanna feel and how can I change that? Because we have that power to choose. And it's as simple as, you know, it sounds simple. Do I want a Coke or a Pepsi, you know, like it all challenges, right? It's like, well, I want this, and even if now I want option A or option B, I want option B. I'm choosing that that power is ours, so I feel like that's an important. Message they have for you right now, so hopefully that helps BM, so many blessings to you. Alright, and then we have Ashish, you are up next. Grab your timestamp here, so Ashish, Bal- Balcaran? Bakaran? I'm probably murdering that, my apologies. So any messages about your love life, alright, let's take a look here. Sorry, I'm crunching away on my cough drop. Alright, well. Lo and behold, you do have the Two of Cups, which is love, life, relationship energy. So there definitely is someone headed your way here. The Sun card, Leo energy, fire sign energy, is a bright light here. Now, let's see, Leo energy, what are we in? We're in Gemini season, right? Yep, we're Gemini, and we'll be switching into Cancer next, right? Yeah, because it's Aries, Taurus, Gemini, Cancer, and then Leo. So Leo season comes in here. July twentieth to August twentieth. So I feel like it's an important energy, um, and it could be someone, if if it is Leo energy, it could be any fire sign. But I feel like a fire, I feel out of this fire that's coming towards you here. And, but I feel like the sun being the sun season of Leo energy. Sorry, my hat is driving me crazy, sorry. But it is, it's like there's this beautiful energy of this coming in and, um. I do feel like it's between that, um, those dates, because they're gonna have a birthday in Leo season. And it's someone. It's not someone you know. But someone you know knows them. And I feel like they're gonna invite you to a party or going out or whatever in celebration of this person's birthday. And that's how you meet them, is because your friend invited you along to go to a birthday party of someone you don't know. But I don't feel like it's a birthday party, well, not necessarily. Could be a barbecue type of party. Because I feel like it's not like, uh, it's a public event, but, uh, but I don't feel like it's at a, like, it's at someone's home, though, you know, kind of thing. But it's a big get get together, a lot of people, a lot of things going on, but I feel like that's where you meet them, so, interesting. So, uh, many blessings. Alright, so that's what they have for you, Ashish, alright, and then Maria P, hello, hello. Thank you for your donation earlier. And for your free reading, like a general for you, let's see, what does Spirit want you to know about you? This one too. Alright. I like this, um, you got a death and rebirth coming here. And the Six of Wands is a victory kind of energy that comes in here. I do feel like it's in the month of June, the six is really standing out here. But there's this ending and significant ending and beginning that feels like a victory for you. And. I do feel work-related, so I feel like there's some sort of change that feels like, uh. And I don't know if it's. Like a new position at the job that you're in, or if you're finding a new position somewhere else, but it definitely is. One thing ends to open the opening to something new. But you feel victorious about it, you feel happy about it, so it's not something that's, oh god, no drama, you know? It feels very successful, and I do feel like it's by the end of June. That you get this information or this experience that happens in here that frees things up here for you. Anything else? I don't know, maybe June thirteenth, because I just looked that up, that's Friday the thirteenth. Dun dun da. So you find out something maybe on Friday the thirteenth in June, maybe, maybe, but. Uh, I like it for you, whatever this is, there is a victory coming in, uh, and it is career work-related, so. If you've been looking for a position, or maybe you get a raise, whatever it is, it just feels like in the month of June. Regarding your work, that it, there is this feeling of victory, so I like it. Right, so that's what they have for you, Maria, many blessings to you. Alright, and then La Kenya, you are up, let's grab your timestamp here, whoops. Let's grab your correct timestamp, there we go. So La Kenya Marion, um, you'd like a reading, I didn't see another question out there. So, um, we'll do a general reading and see what Spirit has here for you, they know your heart. They know what advice you need here, and I feel like this is the other card. Something buried deep, we'll see what that's about here. You do have the Knight of Swords, which all knights have a quest, this knight is on a quest. For the Ace of Swords, which is a pursuit of clarity about seeing things from a different perspective. And. Trying to see things. And and this is about the Queen of Swords, let me just bring that in here first, because the Queen of Swords is about the balance between the head and the heart. And there is this energy here of, um. About the perfect fit for you. And like, maybe this is relationship-oriented, because it is about, you know, the idea of who is perfect for me. I feel like they're telling you that. You're in this process of seeing things differently, letting some old ways of thinking go away. Some old expectations fall away, some old ways of. Even things you've desired, and you're realizing, I've changed, I'm not really the things I thought I wanted before. Not so much anymore, these are the things that are priority now. And I feel like this is this awareness that you're in, realizing that whatever this perfect fit is, whether it's a person or a situation. It's like you're looking at it differently now, and it's a more balanced approach. It's not all from like the mind of expectation or from the heart, but a a good. Feeling of, but it just feels so balanced, wonderful. Instead of feeling so extreme and. Even a, uh, to a point of like desperate, like it has to be this, it has to be this, now you're like, meh. It can be this, it can be this, it can be this, I feel like you're just really. Because you've been learning a lot about your self-love and stepping into your worth and your self-worth. Things that you were using to define yourself before you're not, and it's changing your perspective, and I like that for you. So I feel like that's their big message, is like, trust this balancing energy. Realize you have been changing question thoughts and beliefs, because a lot of them don't serve you anymore. And there's freedom on the other side of it that allows you to kind of step out of some fears and into this place of balance. So hopefully that makes sense for you with what you're wanting to know today, but that's what's coming through, so many blessings to you. Right, and then Premia, you are up, let's grab that timestamp. And Premia, hello, hello, so when? Will you and your husband be together long distance? He is abroad, alright, let's take a look here. Based on current energies. When will you guys be together? Right, I feel like that one, not that one, this one here. Alright, you know, had a feeling. I know I should talk about it, right? But you have the Ace of Swords. And the Tower, the Tower is, it's gonna be a lot sooner than you think. Because the Tower is something obstacles are being removed. Between you guys being together, and the Ace of Swords is an energy of. It's like new communication, clarity that comes in here, and the Tower. I almost feel like whatever is keeping them abroad. If they're at a job or a contract or something's going on, you know, um. I feel like something is changing, a sudden change happens where you guys are being brought back together here. And it does feel. I feel like July, let's see, the Tower is card number sixteen, six and one is seven. I do feel like you get information here that suddenly he's gonna be coming. The guys are gonna be coming together in July, but it's because of a situation that ends, that opens up an opportunity. That is for them, but it brings you guys together faster. So I'm feeling like July is when this happens, and you get sudden communication in July going, well, guess what? They just eliminated the position, or they are closing down. Uh, and they're canceling these things, and so I'm 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 coming home, or I'm, uh. I found a new thing here and you can meet me there now, and, you know, kind of information, so. I feel like July is you're gonna get that information, so, woo, interesting, right? Change is afoot, alright, well, we'll see what's coming from that. Alright, so many blessings, but don't worry, it's not enough, it's, things are opening up for you both, so it's not like a. And at first it's a shock, but then there's, um. You know, great, um. Abun- abundance, abundance, but, um. Benefit from it is the word I was trying to find, whoa, I know. Alright, so that's what they have for you, Premia, so many blessings to you. And then Benita Bala, you are up next, let's grab your timestamp here. Alright, so Benita, hello, hello, I am feeling so much better. I'm starting to wane a little bit, but we're almost done, so that's good. I will be back tomorrow, fresh and ready, I'm gonna get some good rest. So you wanna know how is Sean, uh, how will they behave around your extended family, you feel like? He'll be nervous trying to impress, haha, that's funny. Don't wanna mess, don't wanna mess with the extended family, right? Let's take a look here. Alright, I like it, um, there's a great amount of respect here. With the Hierophant, they're seeing things from a different perspective, a higher perspective, but the Hierophant is like a teacher-student. And I feel like that they'll behave with great respect, like a student. Respects a teacher or, you know, a respectful youngster. Uh, respects an elder kind of energy, so I like that, and they come across that way. Or like, uh, because it almost looks like a master, right, like, um, someone treats a master, right? An apprentice treats a master. The Two of Pentacles is a very balanced energy in the outside world. So I feel like that they'll be fine here, they're just gonna go in with great respect and very balanced, they might be. Like nervous up to when they start meeting people, but I feel like they're gonna be fine with all that energy coming in there as well. So, nothing to worry about, it feels like very, like they're like, wow, what a respectful person they are. Oh, thank you, you know, I just feel like it's gonna be very. They're gonna be very well-liked, uh, kind of energy, right? So that's what they have for you, Benita, so many blessings to you. Right, and then Jennifer Morales, you are up, let's grab your timestamp here. So Jennifer, hello, how does Carlos feel about your last text and will he respond? Ooh, okay. Let's take a look here, how does he feel and will he respond? How does he feel? King of Pentacles, I'm the king of the world. Very balanced, very grounded around it, um. I don't feel like they were, um. It's an abundant energy. Uh, feeling fullness of life, again, I'm the king of the world, like from, uh, that's not good, that is from the Titanic, but. You know, he was just felt on top of the world, kind of energy that's coming in here, so it feels like it's a positive energy. Will he respond? They are contemplating here, the Justice card, they're trying to look at things from a, uh. Like with this Ace of Swords is new communication and the balancing of the scales. I feel like they're trying to figure out how they wanna respond. Kind of enjoy, you wanna do that, how do I wanna respond? But I do feel here with Ace of Swords that they will respond. But they're they're looking, again, this balanced energy, they wanna balance response. They don't wanna be like, whoa, you know, like, okay. And they might even give it like a a day just to think about it, you know? Draft their text and then wait before they send it, because they wanna make sure it's from a. A balanced state with whatever it is, but I do feel like they will, but they they don't feel like. Freaked out about it or aggressive about it at all or anything. Uh, depending on what the text was about, I don't feel like. I just feel like they're kind of copacetic, they're just kind of, I don't use that word copacetic or do this, you know? Feel like they're a cool person, yeah, what's going on, let's sing, let's do this, you know? Surfer dude, you know, feel like I needed to have my hat backwards, maybe this was a setup for for them. They're just kind of cool, playing it cool, but their their hat is all out of whack. That's what they're trying to balance, right? That was all the figuring, let me get my hat on straight and then let me answer you. Interesting, so hopefully that makes Jennifer, uh, makes sense to you, Jennifer, that's what they have for you, so many blessings to you. Then Teresa Horton, you are up. So Teresa, hello, hello, so who is this fake friend that's around you, please? Alright, let's take a look here. Did someone else tell you that you have a fake friend friend around you? Are you cheating on me with our tarot readers? Oh, how rude, I'm just kidding. Okay, well, we got the Page of Wands and the Ace of Cups. So. Let me see here, let me just sit in this. I don't like the word fake, isn't really resonating as much as. Putting on a mask to protect themselves, so it's it's not like they're being fake. Because tha- that's like a kind of a derogatory word, right, like, oh, you're such a fake person. Where it's like, fear is what is having them. Have this, you know, kind of. Presenting themselves in a certain way because they don't feel like they can be themselves, cause they fear rejection, right? The ace of cups is like they're working on their self-love and the page of wands is kind of this. Attraction and passion and, um. Fiery kind of energy, which sparks from fear, it's defensiveness. This is their defensive mechanism that they have in place to try to protect themselves. It's not like they're trying to be fake to you to do things, but they're. Not being their true selves because they fear being rejected for being their true selves, cause their self-love is. So they don't want to get rejected. So it's more that that's there than. Uh, than being fake. I do feel like they use humor a lot. They're very much of a, you know. Go, 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 energy, 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 energy. Cause if they feel like they're moving fast enough and changing the subject and laughing and going all over. That then people won't spot it, but you're like. I'm sensing this, you know, cause you're very, you know. Your empathic abilities is you're like, something's not matching up here. But, and you're like, and I feel like you already know this about the person, like you're using this as a mask to shield what's really behind you. But, um, so it's not being fake or fickle, it's just a protection mechanism. So hopefully that helps. Um, kind of look at him a little differently and realize. People only act fake or put on masks or whatever, cause they fear. I can't be myself, cause I'll be rejected, cause they were taught that growing up. You know, you can't be that, so like, oh, it's best if I hide behind this, so I don't get punished. And, and so that's become a part of who they are. Uh, they're working on it, but, um, I feel like it's important to know that. So hopefully that helps Teresa. That's what they have for you. Alright, and then Gracie, last but not least, look, and you were at two, twelve, twelve. Interesting. Numerology, right? So do you already know your future husband? Alright, Gracie, let's take a look here. Do you already know? Your future husband. Feel like they wanted this one and they do want, we'll give you those two. Since you're my last one, you'll get three cards. You have ace of swords on the bottom, which is new energy, but let's see what we have here. You've got four of swords, the tower, the nine of cups. Alright. So with the four of swords. I don't feel like you know them yet. The, the ace of swords on the bottom is new, like a one, it's the beginning, new, new, new communication. The four of swords, though, you have the ace of swords that's here. They're different than your previous expectations to hear. So it's someone that's different than you've known before and. You know, been around before. They're unlike people that you've had in the past too. And I just feel, cause you have the nine of cups, which is like the dream come true in the tower card that, that. It's like blasting away these preconceived expectations of supposed to be, should be, need to be, have to be like. Well, this is normally what I'm attracted to, what I want in someone. Blah, 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 all the things the mind has taught you that looks good on paper, but. In reality, when you meet your future husband, you're gonna be like. What, what, what just happened? It's like you're, you get struck by lightning, uh, but it's like Cupid's lightning. It's a combination of myths, but it's, uh, you get, it's just like, whoa, out of nowhere, unexpected. That you're like, what the heck? Who would have thunk, you know? Cause it's not someone that I normally be attracted to, um, that I think I'd be attracted to. Um, like if you're normally attracted to like blondes, they're a brunette. Or if they're, you're attracted to, you know, people of your nationality, totally someone totally different. Where you're like, I never thought, what, what, what just happened, you know? Uh, and I like that. It's totally unexpected, totally out of the box, so free and so sudden. So I love that, but I don't feel like you know them yet. Alright, so that's what they have for you, Gracie. So many blessings to you and thank you guys so much. For all your patience in getting to your readings here. I'll be back tomorrow morning again at eleven AM mountain time in about, what, eleven hours? Yeah, it's twelve midnight here where I'm at. Um, so we'll be back in about eleven hours and then. I'll be back tomorrow night at six PM mountain time and then again on Sunday at eleven AM mountain time. If you'd like to join me then. After I'm done with this session, I would be posting a pinned comment, listing the order in which, uh, well, not the order, but. Donations and YouTube channel members and then free readings. Um, and then timestamps next to everything, so you can just click on it, go directly to your reading. So I'm excited. Alright, everybody, um, rest well, sleep well, have a great day if you're on the other side of the world. Until I see you again, remember every second of every day of our lives. We truly are eternally and unconditionally loved by the mother and the father of all things, our creator. And of course, I love you too. So until I see you again, much love, hang in there, take care of yourselves. Remember, have fun. Cause why are we being so serious? Alright, I love you guys. We'll see you soon.